Okay, do we have power? Yes, we do. Okay, pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings as NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Channel 24, and filing such notice with the Township Council. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, January 7, 2025. The Board will take action, formal action. Thank you.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Wendell. Roll call please.
Dan Tuno.
Present.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Jodri. Lent. Marqueta. Mazone.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, which stands our nation under God, in the middle of justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wendell?
At this time, I'll be reading the top three vote-getters from the November 5, 2024 election as follows: For a three-year term, Richard Dunn, 15,795 votes; Kiran Venkatesan, 9,702 votes; and Jay Slade, 9,340 votes. Congratulations. At this time, I'll be moving over to the podium and invite each candidate as listed to be sworn into the Old Bridge Board of Education. Up first, we're going to have Richard Dunn.
I, Richard Dunn, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Richard Dunn, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law and disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kiran Venkatesan.
Hi, Kiran Venkatesan. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Kiran Venkatesan, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Mr. Venkatesan, usually we have a picture with you and your family, too. I know Mr. Dunn didn't have his family with him, but if you'd like to go up there with your family for the picture as well. They're the one making the real sacrifice.
On the stage over here. You get me or not, it's okay.
Look at you. Good, okay, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. And last but not least, Jay Slade.
I, Jay Slade, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Jay Slade, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Picture?
You taking a picture? You want a picture?
Not what you are. Don't you. Get up, get up. You got dressed for the occasion, come on. Get it from the waist up, from the waist up. Well, your mama's going, mama's. Hold on.
They told me to get up.
Right, right. Wasn't for you, I wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, prior to roll call, I'm going to open the floor to any current or newly-elected Board members who would like to have any sending a message.
Yeah, I would like to make a small speech. Good evening, everyone. I'm deeply honored to stand before you today, I'm sitting, but yeah, standing, as a newly-elected member of the Old Bridge Board of Education. Your support and faith have brought us to this moment, and I'm truly humbled by the opportunity to serve our community. As we embark on this journey together, I would like to share my vision and goals for our school district. My vision is to create an inclusive and supportive educational environment where every student has the opportunity to thrive. This means fostering a culture of excellence and innovation in our schools where both academic achievement and personal growth are celebrated. Just a key objectives, a few key objectives would be enhancing the academic excellence. I will advocate for innovative teaching methods and support professional development opportunities for our educators to ensure they have the tools and knowledge to inspire and engage our students. By fostering a love for learning and encouraging curiosity, I aim to raise academic standards and outcomes for all students. Promoting inclusivity and diversity. Our school should be a reflection of our diverse community. I will work to create an inclusive environment where every student feels valued and respected, regardless of their background or abilities. This includes supporting programs that celebrate cultural diversity and promote understanding and acceptance. Supporting special needs education. I will prioritize the needs of students with special needs by advocating for tailored support and resources. This includes hiring any specialized staff, offering individualized education plans, and ensuring that our facilities are accessible to all students. Fostering social-emotional learning. I recognize the importance of social-emotional learning in the overall development of our students. I will support programs that teach empathy, resilience, and effective communication skills. Engaging the community. I believe that collaboration with parents, teachers, and community members is essential for the success of our schools. I will establish open lines of communication and create opportunities for community involvement in decision-making processes. Together, we can address challenges and celebrate successes as a united community. I have an initial draft of some goals and objectives as a proposal, which I'll be sharing with the fellow Board members and school administration to collaborate and share with the community once we finalize. In closing, I want to reiterate my gratitude to each and every one of you for your support and for allowing me the honor of serving on the Board of Education. I'm excited about the future and positive impact we can make together. Let's work hand in hand to create the best possible educational experience for our children and ensure that they are prepared to reach their fullest potential. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Thank you, David. First, I want to sincerely thank all the voters who came out and voted this past November for the three members of the Board of Education who have been seated here tonight. It's not an easy endeavor to run for office and to be seated and to work with the Board to ensure the greatest and finest education for our students. So I want to sincerely congratulate Kiran and also Jay for being elected this term, and I look forward to working with both of you and the other six sitting Board members for the betterment of this school district. We do have a lot of work ahead of us, and one thing I have to say is that I've come in with an agenda that I will work on very tirelessly over the next three years to ensure it gets enacted. You know, I have the institutional knowledge. I sat on this board for 11 years previously, so I have a lot of knowledge and information that I can share with my Board members here to make us a more cohesive and a more unified group. That's very important to get things done. When you work together, you find common goals. It's not about one person, it's about nine people working together for the betterment of our students and our school district. With that said, I have 10 or 11 items that I'm going to pledge tonight that I will personally work on and ensure that the Board of Education considers, addresses, and possibly implements over the next three years. First, civility, decorum, and professionalism of the Board is extremely important. We need to work together in a uniform manner, we need to work together, we need to respect one another, and we must show our school district, our school district of character, that the Board of Education can work together and find common ground for the betterment of this district. Very important. It's a lesson that we can teach our students, which we do right now very well in our schools by having our schools being a national school character. Also, I would like to promote financial stability and responsibility, which is very, very important. We are the stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we need to work tirelessly to ensure that we find the best avenues to spend the money and to get the finest education. Third, I believe in fair and equitable education, enrichment for all children, all children. And we can't forget that. We have different degrees of children in this district from, you know, from the special services that we provide up to the advanced costs or offerings that we have, and then we have in the middle the industrial arts. So we need to work fairly and ensure that all children are treated equally and correctly. Also, I'm going to work as number four, abolishment of political parties from the Board of Education with the election being moved back to April. It's very important that we start moving away from political parties and working together as a group, not worrying about the peripheral issues that affect our schools. We have to worry about education and nuts and bolts of our district. And by eliminating the November election and going back to an April election, that will give us the ability to stay bipartisan and stay away from politics. So I'm going to propose that we move the elections back to April. It will allow us to do that, we have the power to do that, and I'm going to push for that because I believe that will enhance the educational abilities of this district. Third, I want the return of late buses. I'm going to work with everyone here on the Board to find the money, to determine how we're going to bring back the late buses, and to ensure that all children have every opportunity possible for further learning and services. Enhance special services for our most vulnerable. Very, very important. I've always been an advocate, and I can tell you unequivocally that the majority of the Board up here believes in our special services, believes in giving them the services that are necessary to all our children to be successful. Funding, full funding of Play Unified. Very, very important. Children who are, who require additional services, who have social skills issues, who have issues which need extra fostering and extra companionship, and also socially-adapted events will make them more, give them the ability to acclimate themselves and be able to be successful students. I also believe in redistricting of the school district. School improvements, building enhancements, and possible school consolidation based upon new buildings coming online. This is something that I fought for for 11 years. We were getting close to doing certain things. I want to re-implement that idea. Also, fight for equitable shared services with the township. That's something which I campaigned on, and I'm going to fight for fair and equitable shared services, not one side benefiting from the majority of the monies. So we have to work together and find a fair solution because right now it's not equitable, it's not fair. So that's something which I'm going to push and I'm going to fight for. And last but not least, we need to find cohesiveness and come together to figure out what we're going to do with our superintendent. Everyone knows that I'm very fond of Mr. Sittadino and his years of service here, and even though I am conflicted, as most people know, but that does not preclude me from speaking my mind and pushing for someone who I believe will benefit our school district. So those are my agendas and my items that I'm going to be working for and collaborating and working tirelessly with everyone on this Board to make happen over the next three years. Thank you so much.
I got to follow those, too. That's alone. I would just like to humbly thank everybody for the reelection. I had a great three years. I had a lot of fun, very productive. Part of my campaigning was, I'm going to use the last three years as my resume of what I'm capable of doing. I'm always willing to learn even more. But I'm excited about the opportunity again for another three years. As I've done, I've supported all students, staff, I work well with the administration. Again, I want to work well with the Board as well. Collaboration is key. And I'm excited for another three years. So thank you again for your votes and your support. Thank you.
Any other current Board members?
I was just going to congratulate, welcome Kiran, welcome back, Rich, and Jay. Looking forward to this year. Thank you.
Anyone else? Are we good? I will now do a roll call of our newly-elected Old Bridge Board of Education. Dan Tuno.
Yes.
Dunn.
Present.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here, yes.
Jodri.
Here.
Mazone.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
And Venkatesan.
Here.
We have a quorum. At this time, I will now open the meeting to the public on agenda items only. Hearing of the residents for agenda items only. Seeing none? Oh, hold on. Okay, I'll do one more call for hearing of the residents' agenda items only. Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is closed. At this time, I will be reviewing the process taken upon the Board for election of both a President and Vice President in accordance with District Policy by Law 0152. The Board of Education shall organize by electing one of its members as President and another as Vice President. This election shall take place at the annual reorganization meeting presented to NJSA 18A-15-1. The procedures for the election of Board officers shall be as follows. Board President: At the annual reorganization meeting, the Board Secretary, serving as interim Chair, shall call for nominations for Board President. Any member may place a member's name in nomination. A second is not required for the nomination of a candidate for President. A member who has nominated may decline the nomination. The Board Secretary and Board Attorney shall record the names of all nominees for Board President. When Board Presidents have been given an opportunity to make nominations for Board President, the Board Secretary shall close the nominations. The Board Secretary shall then conduct a roll call vote on nominees in order, in the order in which they were nominated. Nominees who have declined nomination shall not be included in the roll call. A Board Member may only vote in support of one candidate. The first candidate to receive votes from a single, from a simple majority of the Board Members present will be elected to office, and the Board President election shall, process shall conclude with no further roll calls. In the event of a tie between two or more nominees, a second runoff election shall be conducted between the candidates receiving the highest number of votes. In the event of such a tie, the Board Secretary shall conduct a runoff election via roll call in which each Board Member may only vote in favor of one of the remaining candidates. Board Vice President: After the President is elected and assumes chairmanship of the meeting, the President shall call for nominations for Vice President. Any member may place a member's name in nomination. A second is not required for the nomination of a candidate for Vice President. A member who has been nominated may decline the nomination. The Board Secretary and Board Attorney shall record the names of all nominees for Vice President. When Board Members have been given an opportunity When board members have been given an opportunity to make nominations for vice president, the board president shall close the nominations. The board president shall then conduct a roll call vote on nominees in the order in which they were nominated. Nominees who have declined nomination shall not be included in the roll call. A board member may not, may only vote in support of one candidate. The first candidate to receive votes from a simple majority of the board members present will be elected to office, and the board vice president election shall, process shall conclude with no further roll calls. In the event, in the event of a tie between two or more nominees, a second runoff election shall be conducted between the candidates receiving the highest number of votes. In the event of such a tie, the board secretary shall conduct the runoff election via roll call in which each board member may only vote in favor of one of the remaining candidates. Officers shall serve for one year and until their respective successors are elected and shall qualify, but if the board shall fail to hold a reorganization meeting or to elect board officers as prescribed in NJSA 18A:15-1, the executive county superintendent shall appoint from among the members of the board a president and/or vice president. A president or a vice president who refuses to perform the duties imposed upon him or her by law and by the bylaws of the Old Bridge Board of Education may be removed by a majority vote of all the members of the board. In the event the office of president or vice president shall become vacant, the board shall within 30 days thereafter fill the vacancy for the unexpired term. If the board fails to fill the vacancy within such time, the executive county superintendent shall fill the vacancy for the unexpired term. In the event of a vacancy in the position of board president, the vice president shall act in the capacity of president until a new president is duly elected by full membership of the board or appointed by the executive county superintendent as set forth above. The vice president shall not have an automatic right of succession in the event of a vacancy in the office of board president. At this time, I would like to take nominations for board president.
I would like to nominate Jen Dantuno. She's done a great job as vice president. I would like to nominate her for the, for the office of president.
I would like to nominate Elena Francisco for president.
Any other nominations? Once, twice, closed. We will now conduct a roll call. This roll call will be for first nomination for president of Jennifer Dantuno. Roll call. Dantuno.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
No.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mazon.
No.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
No.
Venkatesan.
No.
We have a total count of five yes and four no. We still have to do a roll call. No? You're good? Okay. All right. The new board president, Jennifer Dantuno, will assume the chair.
I can do it from here.
That's fine for this meeting.
So at this time, I'd like to open the nomination for vice president.
I would like to nominate Elena as vice president.
I would like to nominate Jay Slade.
Anyone else? At this time, nominations are closed. Do I do roll call or he does? David, can you please do a roll call on Francisco?
Yes. Roll call for Elena Francisco as vice president. Dantuno.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
No.
Mazon.
Yes.
Slade.
No.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
We have five votes yes, four votes no for Elena Francisco as vice president. Your new board vice president is Elena Francisco.
Congratulations, Elena, on finance. Reading, just discussing. Okay. I need a motion for finance, one through, one and two.
Giordano motion.
It says one and two on here.
There's four. There are four items.
I'm skipping pages. I'm sorry. That's it. I failed already. To accept a motion on one through four.
Yes, Giordano motion.
Mazon will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mazon.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
And Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions one through four for finance passes.
On supplies, equipment, and services, resolutions one and two. A motion, please.
Mazon will motion.
Dunn will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mazon.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions one through two for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Board secretary and board business, resolution one and two. Mazon will motion.
Before we do that, I do, it is our annual practice that I read all of the code of ethics over for the Board of Education. So item number one is move the board, and also if there's any questions, I was told to please refer them to legal counsel, Mr. Parton, based on every video I've watched on the reorgs online. So this time, move the board acknowledges receipt of the code of ethics by each school board members, the reading thereof, thereof by the acting school business administrator, and subsequent discussion thereof. In accordance with NJSA 18A:12-24.1, every board member will abide by the following code of ethics. The board member will, one, uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the state Board of Education and court orders pertaining to the schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Two, make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Three, confine his or her board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Four, carry out his or her responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with fellow board members, ensure they are well-run. Five, recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. Six, refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Seven, hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, he or she will provide accurate information and, in concert with fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Eight, vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrator officer. Nine, support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. Ten, refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. I believe a copy of this is in everyone's packet. Please sign and return to me at the conclusion of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve one and two?
Mazon will motion. Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mazon.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
And Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for board secretary and board business passes.
Hearing of the residents on any school district issue. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Mr. Widel, do we still have the binder to be signed?
I got it, but you're good.
Andrew Lewis, OBEA. I just want to congratulate the three members who were sworn in today, as well as Ms. Dantuno and Ms. Francisco, becoming president and vice president, and I look forward to working with all nine of you this year. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the hearing of the residents.
I want to make one comment about a topic. Can I do it now or? Yeah, okay. Here comes new business.
Okay. So is there any old business? Any old business? Okay, any new business?
Yeah. So apparently one of the parents whose kids are twins going to high school, you're supposed to be here, you couldn't make it due to a family situation. I'm already working with Dr. Tuie about this. Dr. Tuie is very much aware, and probably you also, Mr. Cittadino, but just want to bring that light to the community on what's going on. These two kids were in Edison Township, but they moved here to Old Bridge like last year, and they have been part of something called as HOSA. HOSA is the Global Student Lead Organization, recognized by the U.S. Department of Education, more to build professional career, career shape or, you know, build them more into health professionals, right? So this is more of a club, actually, which the students, these two kids, you know, were in Edison, they did win an award and stuff like that. So they want to continue the momentum in our district while they move to our district, and I know Dr. Tuie is already helping about it. I'm just talking on behalf of the parent who told me about this, so we are all aware of it. Thank you.
Yes, so I'll just add to that. And we have our leadership meeting every Monday. This week it was Tuesday, and it was a topic that you had brought up. It's called HOSA, which is the Health Occupation Student Association of America, and it's kind of like FBLA, which is, gives students the access and experience working in the business organizations as they leave the high school and have that, those experiences, and Dr. Tuie's, you know, working as an advocate for it as well. This would give students that kind of similar experiences working in futures in healthcare. We know the future of healthcare is going to be very rich and strong in the United States as it always is because it's not something you can outsource. So excellent. We're looking into it, and we're working on it.
Thank you.
Yes. So during my Christmas visit at the high school, those conversations about reversing block scheduling, a lot of teachers want to see their students every day as, they think it's a better comparison compared to double the amount of time every two days. They compare it to sports that meet every day, clubs meet every day. So if we could like poll the staff at the high school to see what they think, before we make any changes, of course, you know. I just want to see, you know, what the staff thinks. And good luck to the 2025 board. Thank you.
Would that be a discussion for curriculum?
Yeah, I'd say we'd start that in curriculum, have some conversation, get some data, and, you know, make a direction going forward.
Okay. I have a question for the fellow board members. I think many of us don't care for this seating arrangement because nobody can see anybody. Is any opinions, any opposition to changing it back to the?
I like the old way better.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'm a traditionalist, and I think maybe many of the board members up here are as well. I would like to propose to go back to the original format with having the superintendent and the attorney sitting next to the president and vice president and going back to the original format that was instituted for many, many years, and it always worked in our benefit. And I would also oppose alphabetical order so that, you know, we are consistent with previous boards and that, you know, there is civility and also there is regimented positioning based upon alphabetical order by last name. Thank you.
I have a question for you. What do you mean by what it used to?
So go on. Yes, so basically, the way it was done years ago was that it was in this positioning for the most part, but the superintendent and attorney were in the middle, and the board would be facing forward. There will be no board members sitting on the angle, and it would be done based upon alphabetical order. I know that Mr. Tuie, Dr. Tuie, is a new member up here at the podium, so I'm not sure if there will be room, but that's something which we can discuss. But it's, it's the privilege of the board to determine the seating arrangement and how we move forward with it.
I was just saying, it was similar.
Yeah, it was very similar, yes. There was an added desk up here at some point within the last year. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes?
You say I can't even see you right now. I want to fix this, and let's fix this. Anything, you know, that's makes us eye contact, I think that's more important and crucial. Thank you.
So maybe it's something we can discuss. I, I agree that, you know, it can be different, but I don't know if going back to the way that it was with the staggering is better because then we have board members' backs to other board members, and then in order to see them, you have to turn around. So I don't love that either. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, the left side of my neck doesn't like this, so I can't see what's going on down there.
There's no budget to purchase new equipment. Dave, David's, all right, so then that's maybe something we can work out with administration to not have it this way, but try and work out a way. Everyone comfortable with that?
What was that?
I said we'll talk with administration and try and figure something out for next week so it's not this way, but we're trying to do the most professional and appropriate way.
There, there is plenty of video out there from previous years, and going back three years ago, the setup always worked, and it was like that for a very long time, and we never had issues with seeing and watching and being able to participate. This way, it's, it's very flawed where it's very difficult to see eye contact, and as a board member, it's important that we make eye contact so that we continue having a civil discussion. When there's no eye contact, then things can get silly. So I would like going, to go back into the U shape, and there's previous videos that you could see that worked over the years for a very long time.
Okay. We'll work on it. All right. Any other conversations? And we don't have executive session, so, okay. So at this time, we'll close the meeting. Well, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mazon will motion.
Jodri will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we will see everyone same time next week. Thank you very much.